Good afternoon, Commissioners. This is Troy, your host. We are live and recording.
Well, good afternoon, everybody. We do not have a member of our faith-based community with us today, so if you'll just join me in a moment of silence, please. Thank you very much. It's now 1:30 p.m. in the afternoon of Tuesday, November 8th. Thank you for joining us for our business meeting. If you'll all rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Attorney Pratt, do we have certification of the agenda today?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yes, the Attorney's Office has reviewed all the items on today's agenda, and they meet legal approval.
Thank you, Mr. Pratt. And do any Commissioners have disclosures for items on the agenda today?
I have none, thank you.
No, sir.
And I have none either. With that, we are going to move to a special moment in our business meeting, which is employee recognition. We're always very thankful to acknowledge the incredible individuals that work for Douglas County and on behalf of our 370,000 citizens. Today, we have Carissa Saunders, who would like to recognize Kim Clark for her 10 years of service with the Clerk and Recorder's Office. Kim and Carissa.
Good afternoon. Thank you guys for having us today. This is Kim Clark. She has now worked for Douglas County for 10 years, which is a really exciting milestone, as you guys all know. So Kim started back in our Castle Rock office just down the street here in 2012. She worked the front line for several years, serving the citizens that came in on a day-to-day basis. She served as a mentor as well in that time for our newer clerks. As you guys are aware, our training program is pretty lengthy, learning all of the ins and outs of the titling and registration. So Kim definitely has assisted our newer clerks as a resource in learning those items. In 2018, when the state upgraded from a DOS-based system to a web-based system, drives rolled out. Kim created and maintained our new inventory system. This is no small feat, as we did some math this morning, and in a month's timeframe, our three offices can issue about 44,000 items out to our citizens. And so Kim maintained our warehouse at the Elections Building and distributed to our three offices and wrote the SOP book, which would make your head spin. Kim continues to serve the county on the back-line team, which I supervise, so we work closely with our dealerships and business partners to provide some backend services. She's worked closely with our business partners, so they are compliant with titling and registering the vast array of machinery you guys see on construction sites, and then, of course, their regular fleet vehicles. Kim currently works on processing titles for all of our vehicles purchased within the county, and she's regularly one of our highest producers. Again, she's a relied-upon resource for her vast amount of knowledge. I know if I need a quick phone call because somebody is saying that they need their circus tent titled, I know Kim has the answer. She can explain the nuances to peers and external customers so that they don't feel like this is above their heads and something crazy, that she makes it very digestible and grasping. She's been an integral part of several innovations that we've been working on this year. So we were really excited to reboot our dealer training. So we reached out to dealerships to ensure that when they're sending us in paperwork for citizens to get their title and registration, that it's completed correctly the first time. She has also helped build those partnerships and provided a vast amount of information to them so that we can get that done as quickly as possible for our citizens. Kim has also provided an expert eye and invaluable feedback for our scanning project. As you guys are aware, motor vehicle is on the cutting edge of trying to bring in all this very document-heavy to a digital error so we can start scanning that stuff in, provide remote work opportunities, and keep up with other opportunities within the state of Colorado. And truly, she comes in with the most innovative ideas and the how-you-thought-ifs that are just second to none. So I don't think that Douglas County would be where we are today without her for the last 10 years, because she has truly made it a more innovative place. So thank you guys for recognizing her.
Carissa, thank you for that. It sounds like Kim has a wonderful person to report to and work with. So thank you for sharing that. Kim?
I didn't know I was speaking. I'm sorry. Thank you.
You don't have to, but it's a special day for you, so we'd like to give you the floor.
Yeah, I mean, like we've kind of talked about, I've been in motor vehicle my entire 10 years. I've worked in the Castle Rock office. I've done a lot. I mean, you pretty much name it, I've done it and enjoyed all of it and learning all the ins and outs of the county and how it works and working with some really great people. So yeah, thank you.
Well, Kim, thank you for that. Let's open it up to the Board of County Commissioners.
Kim, I'd like to thank you and congratulate you. 10 years in motor vehicle is a long time. When I was back visiting with you and Tiny and Janice before we started the meeting, I think I used the words, "the patience of Job." And, you know, anybody who's gone to motor vehicle to renew their plates knows that it can be an arduous process because things change. If people change their titles, their license plates, there are so many variables. So it has helped me understand the numerous different aspects and nuances of the job that you need to know and you're training others. And you are the face of Douglas County, so thank you for what you have done to again show Douglas County residents why we are the best county in the state. So thank you and congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Thomas. Commissioner Teal?
Yeah, it's hard to, given the description of your duties and responsibilities, it's hard to imagine a single person, at least a single household in the county here that your work doesn't touch. And Commissioner Thomas and I had an opportunity to go over and tour the Stephanie Place location and I think see your workplace. There were the license plates and the tags are housed and everything, and it looked great. So well done keeping house. But, you know, great job. And thanks for being here for 10 years to work for your residents, to work for your neighbors, and help us all, you know, run a great county.
Thank you.
Well, I wish I could have joined that tour. I've got kind of a busy day. But after I'm not a candidate, hopefully I'll have an opportunity to come visit you again. But I've had several opportunities over the last four years to see really the miracle of how you are all able to get such a massive volume of information and transactions out to the community and really be that public face that people interact with. Individuals in our community certainly see you all much more than they see us. So thank you for being that sort of vice president of first impressions for our entire county. Oftentimes, I think in our travels, we get the question of, you know, how is Douglas County so efficient? And I think part of that is the institutional memory of those that have your experience, Kim, that just understand every department like the back of your hand. So we are really thankful for you. Let's all, please join me if you would, and give her a round of applause. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you both. Thank you very much. So with that, we'll move to item two, which is our citizen comments, organization comments. At this time, you are welcome to comment about any topic other than what is scheduled on today's regular agenda. You'll be prompted to comment on those items at the appropriate time. This is an opportunity to share your thoughts and ideas with us. If you would, just state your name and where you're from. Before you make your comments, you will have up to three minutes. Commissioner comments, if any, will follow citizen comments. Do we have any citizen comments today? Troy, do we have any comments online?
Thank you, Commissioner. I have no online comments.
Okay, and with that, I will close citizen comment and move to item three, our consent agenda. Let me just ask, before I accept a motion, if there are any comments, either in person or online, with regard to our consent agenda.
Commissioner, I also have no online comments.
Okay. I'll close citizen comment and bring it back to the board for any further discussion and/or a motion.
I have a motion to approve the requests in all items A through O of the consent agenda.
Second. So we have a first and second on the floor. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, and that carries 3-0. So with that, we'll move to item four, which is our regular agenda items. The first item for today is item 4A, ARPA subrecipient agreement between Douglas County and Arapahoe Community College for the establishment of an advanced robotics and automation lab in the amount not to exceed $1,250,000. Dan Avery presenting for staff. Hi, Dan.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. I am pleased to introduce the next three items on the agenda, which are American Rescue Plan Act recipient, subrecipient agreements. When the county received these federal funds, the board sought forward-looking investments that would create legacy benefit for our residents. Arapahoe Community College and its students are the beneficiaries of these three grant awards. The investments in higher education are intended to address workforce needs in the county and key industries. The first agreement provides $1.25 million in grant funding to ACC to expand its advanced robotics and automation program to Douglas County students in a lab to be constructed at the school district's new legacy campus in Lone Tree. This funding will equip the lab with robotics and advanced manufacturing equipment for use in robotics and automation technology and mechatronics degree programs. The second agreement provides approximately $608,000 in grant funding leveraged with state funding to construct a mobile medical skills lab that will be used to train 100 to 200 Douglas County residents for employment opportunities in the healthcare industry, including certified nursing assistants, medical assistants, and emergency medical technician positions. The third and final agreement provides $350,000 to expand Arapahoe Community College's Elevate program and its Rising Together in Search of Excellence, or RISE, program in Douglas County. These programs provide counseling, mentoring, tutoring, transportation, internships, leadership development, and scholarships for Douglas County students with intellectual and developmental disabilities and traumatic brain injury. These labs and programs are slated to begin operations next fall. I am pleased to introduce Dr. Stephanie Fuji, Arapahoe County, Arapahoe Community College President, and Dr. Eric Dunker, ACC's Vice President of Workforce and Economic Development, for additional remarks.
Thank you, Dan. Any questions for Dan?
No questions for Dan.
I have none.
Welcome, ACC, please.
So my name is Stephanie Fuji. I'm honored to present serving as a president for Arapahoe Community College. The county Commissioners...
See, a doctor does not necessarily guarantee that you know how to use technology.
You know, when you do come to speak before us, we do demand technical expertise demonstrated.
Dr. Fuji, I have a doctorate too, and I didn't turn it on beforehand, so I'll take responsibility for that.
Well, thank you, and I'm learning. So as an educator, I find that we're in a growth mindset, and we're always learning. So I just, on behalf of the college, I just wanted to take an opportunity to express our sincerest gratitude at allowing us this opportunity. As we've shared with you, COVID has hit our county, has hit our region, has hit our state and our country extremely hard. And we know that as a result of it, it has impacted even more significantly our healthcare operations. The demand for healthcare has gone even, has increased more. It was significant prior to the pandemic, but we just saw it exasperated. So this money will enable us to train more students. It will enable us to deliver to business and industry and hospitals, and it will allow us to be able to care for our community. The cutting-edge robotics equipment will enable us to be at the forefront of technology and computer science, because the program does combine both of that. We believe strongly, Jobs for the Future just came up with a report that talked about really, truly, if America wants to be able to be at the forefront as a nation, that we need to blur the lines between K through 12 and higher education. I really believe that with Douglas County School District, ACC will be doing that, and we get excited. As you've seen at our STEM collaboration campus, we've been able to do that in partnership with Colorado State University. The investment in the robotics lab will be able to do that. Also, the county's support for our medical mobile lab will be a one-of-a-kind facility that will enable us to travel throughout the county to be able to deliver, to train, to train and deliver healthcare services to our residents. So just want to express our sincerest appreciation. Arapahoe Community College has a strong history of being able to deliver on the commitments that we make to our citizens. And also, we pride ourselves on being held accountable in delivery of those services. It is important to us that we be a strong delivery of the investment that the county and the state, particularly of the funds that we are given. So if you have specific questions, Dr. Dunker and I can certainly address those as well.
Thank you, Dr. Fuji. Any questions or comments for Dr. Fuji or for Dr. Dunker? And Dr. Dunker, if you had any additional comments?
Oh, yeah, thank you. You know, this is both professional but also personal for me. I'm a, you know, I'm also a lifelong resident of this county. I graduated from Douglas County High School 25-plus years ago. I have three, we're raising three kids in the county. So yes, this is my work, but also it's personal, and I sincerely appreciate this investment on behalf of the ACC team to invest in truly what's going to be the most state-of-the-art robotics lab in the state that's directly connected to good jobs. And that's what it's about, getting our residents, keeping them local, and getting them into good jobs. And then in terms of healthcare, I am pleased to announce that because of your investment, which will be official hopefully in a little bit, the state is giving us $860,000 additional dollars to build out this full medical health lab. Those things are really expensive, but they saw the investment from Douglas County. So this is money that's going, that's coming now from the state, that's leveraging your investment. That's going to take this even further for our county. So I just want to really sincerely appreciate that. Just like the county does, leverages other funds, we like to do the same, and they saw that, this investment and this partnership, and they doubled down on it. So really appreciate that. And then finally, with our IDD population, we know this is close to the heart for many of us. We feel like we have an obligation to serve these students as well as possible. There are not consistent funding streams for this kind of work, so we sincerely appreciate this investment to serve our IDD and acquired brain injury population in the county. Thank you.
Dr. Dunker, thank you so much. Any comments or questions for the ACC leadership?
No questions.
I have none.
Well, you know, I guess I don't have any questions, but it is just a high note of gratitude for the exceptional leadership that you represent, not only for ACC but throughout this entire community. You know, Dr. Dunker, your background and experience, your institutional memory, which we just spoke about in and through Douglas County, is significant, and we all feel those ripple effects in everything that you take on. I know we are very fortunate to have received Dr. Fuji from Arizona, and we hope to keep her as long as she's willing. Again, I, you know, I remember growing up in the '90s, and community college had a different perception among my peers. And today, ACC really represents the tip of the spear in terms of innovation, opportunities, workforce development. And for me as a commissioner, I really like to invest in entities that demonstrate return on investment. And Dr. Fuji, when you talk about transparency, accountability, and that significant return, we're seeing, post-COVID, post-pandemic, this really wonderful return to the workforce that has been augmented and supplemented by your phenomenal program. So I'm really pleased to just continue the partnership that we have here. So thank you for being with us today. Let me open it up for any citizen comments. Are there any citizen comments, either in person or online, with regard to this agenda item?
Thank you, Commissioner. I have no online comments.
Okay, and with that, I'll close citizen comment and bring it back to the board for any further questions and/or a motion.
I have some comments I would like to make now that citizen comment is closed. You know, one of my three degrees is from Arapahoe Community College, and I was adjunct faculty at Arapahoe Community College in the criminal justice program for many years. And even as recently as last month, I was invited by Arapahoe Community College to sit on a panel in the criminal justice program to talk about my experience and help incoming citizens, or incoming people who are interested in perhaps getting into law enforcement. You know, when I campaigned to run for county commissioner, I promised to be fiscally responsible. And I always ask myself, is this the role of county government? Because I believe my role as a commissioner is to invest in those things that are county government responsibility. There's a huge portion of the state's budget that goes to education, and education is not the role of county government, nor is healthcare. And let's not confuse healthcare with our public health department. Those are two separate things. And that is why I do not believe either item A or B are the role of county government, and so I will be voting no on those two items.
Commissioner Teal?
Well, I guess I'm just going to go ahead and come out and say I'll be voting yes on both items. The reality is, is, you know, I spent many years in my grade school years in eastern Kansas, right outside of Kansas City. And Johnson County Community College, which actually is pretty well-known, it's well-known as a quality institution, was a great recreational amenity for many of the non-attending residents in Johnson County, Kansas. And, but the important thing was, there, and quite frankly, Dr. Fuji, you may know this, I don't know this for a fact, but what I do know is that the mill levy, the property taxes of the area, supported Johnson County Community College through a completely different funding mechanism than the people of the state of Kansas fund either KU in Lawrence or K-State in Manhattan, Kansas. And, you know, we don't really, we didn't really do our higher education here in Colorado along those same lines. And so what we have with ACC is not a institution, despite a community college, it is still an institution of higher learning, but it's not funded by local mill levies. And that's important, because in other parts of the country, it's that local mill levy that makes sure that that community college is delivering the education, not that the, oh, well, the PhDs in the ivory tower at the state institutions, particularly those that might be, it's not homestead, it's land-grant institutions, have determined, well, what is the academic, you know, rationale for any subject matter? But instead, it creates an institution of higher learning that is responsive to that community. It creates an institution that, actually, Dr. Fuji, you said it really great just a few minutes ago, blurs that line between our high school and our college level of knowledge. And quite frankly, it's funding mechanisms very much like this that allow us to have that same level of control. I mean, we've had many great conversations with Dr. Fuji. Dr. Dunker, you've been a great member of our community for many years, and I've always appreciated how receptive you are to the community. But, you know, well, based upon my 20 years of business, I could tell you, talk is cheap. And the reality is, if you're ever going to move the needle in order to shape the educational services of an institution, it does get shaped by funding. And, you know, yeah, we could talk about business groups that are influencing the basic training for their employees in a specific community, but it also goes to, well, what kind of faculty can be recruited in? And obviously, as my colleague mentioned, it was her many years of service in the Colorado State Highway Patrol that brought her to a position on the faculty at ACC. And here, you know, I'm sure we do have many good members of our community that know about robotics, but if, but do we really have the best? Do we have those that can provide the staffing to, what we really do hope, doctors, will become a world-class training lab in robotics? Because largely, and Commissioner Layden and I have been in many conversations with many of the large businesses that are moving into the area, this is the work they're going to be doing here. Then they're coming here probably for a couple of different factors, but the education that is already here from our high schools is considered a good start. It is this lab, it is the mobile medical lab that we are hoping will give us that next step up, to where quite frankly, we are helping our residents, who they can't vote yet, they can't vote today, they haven't yet graduated high school, they're not yet 18, but they will be soon. And they will be voters, they will be residents, they are residents, they will be the taxpayers who ultimately we will be responsible for, for these expenditures. So I'll just get us started right away, and if it pleases the board, I do have a motion to approve the ARPA subrecipient agreement between Douglas County and Arapahoe Community College for establishment of an advanced robotics and automation lab in an amount not to exceed $1,250,000.
Second.
So there's a first and second on the floor. Is there any further discussion? So I'll just add on Commissioner Teal's comments, and I really appreciate, I think, his keen awareness of the economic vitality that is so essential to the health, safety, and welfare of a county, which is really our statutory charge. My superlative in high school, I think I've shared with you, is most likely to be a college professor, so I don't intend to deliver a history lesson, but I will reflect upon the pandemic and COVID and many of the public policies that led to this decision today. We know that in large part, it was the choices of government to close businesses, to shutter schools, that created a real challenge in our economy. For us, it was important to protect both lives and livelihoods, but we heard from the experts that the real heroes of the pandemic were women. 80% of those that left the workforce were female, primarily to care for kids that, you know, their schools were closed down. And so there was a lot of at-home education going on. From my perspective, creating that corridor, helping to augment that corridor back to employment, to upskill, to be retrained, to get back into the workforce, was a top priority, not only of me, but it's been a core priority of this county for a long time. So one of our six core priorities is economic foundations. And so I'm really thankful that Commissioner Teal shares that perspective. We see it on our wall every day, that economic foundations is what we do. It's part of what our county expects of us. It's what our businesses expect of us. And so from my perspective, developing this partnership with you allows us to really reduce unemployment and continue to develop our economy in this county. So again, I'm in support of it, very thankful for the presentation you've made today. Let me ask if there's any further discussion or comments?
If I may, Mr. Chair, point of order, has there been public comment on this item?
Yes.
Okay, just double checking. Thank you.
Yes, there has, and I think because Dan made a presentation for A, B, and C, what I might do, if it pleases the board, is take the motions in order. I asked for citizen comment on 4A, but let me go ahead and, well, there's a motion on the floor for A, so let me see if there's any further discussion. So seeing none, all those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
No.
And that passes 2 to 1. With that, let me just ask on both B and C under 4, if there are any additional citizen comments, either in person or online.
I have no online comment.
Okay, and with that, I'll close citizen comment for items 4B and 4C, and I will accept motions for both of those.
Well, if it pleases the board, I do have a motion as well to approve the ARPA subrecipient agreement between Douglas County and Arapahoe Community College for a mobile health and medical skills lab and classroom in an amount not to exceed $607,000. Boy, I'm not juggling money well today. $607,850 and zero cents.
Second.
So there's a first and second on the floor. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, and that carries, or I'm sorry, are there any opposed?
No.
And that carries 2 to 1.
Well, if it pleases the board, I do have a motion to also approve the ARPA subrecipient agreement between Douglas County and Arapahoe Community College for expanded services to Douglas County students with intellectual and developmental disabilities in an amount not to exceed, I'll make sure I get this right, $350,000.
I'll second that, and I have comments.
Please.
So I will support this project. I think that the IDD population across the country and in this state have been highly overlooked, and that this board has already made a commitment. We paid over $6 million to build, to buy a hotel here in Castle Rock that will be turned into residential living for the IDD population. And I think that the school made an excellent, ACC made an excellent case for this when they came to talk to us, and they indicated that this funding is for two years, and that with two years of funding, they will be able to build their case and make the state to the state who is responsible for funding higher education and community colleges in this state, to continue funding this project. And because of that information, I will be in support of this project.
Thank you, Commissioner Thomas. Further discussion?
I am happy to concur with my colleague from Highlands Ranch.
You know, I will as well, and, you know, I'm really pleased that this board, all three of us, has been very active in the IDD space over the last few months. I think the level of contribution to this underserved community will be well-received, and I'm looking forward to that further partnership, so I will be in support as well. So with that, all those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, and that carries three zero. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Technical test passed, doctor. Well done.
Thank you, ACC. So with that, we'll move to item five. Any other business today?
No other business.
Okay, and then item six, our county manager.
Yeah, and the commissioners. Thank you, Mr. Chair. The commissioners will notice there's not a county manager report today. That's because a couple times a year, we have back-to-back business meetings, and you'll see one next week. So I thought we'd cover a handful of items in lieu of a report, starting with, and just a moment of reflection from our work earlier this morning where we were preparing, the board was preparing for the state of the county. Commissioner Teal remarked about how he remembers a time when the cooperation between the cities and the county wasn't always what it is today. We have the privilege Thursday night to have the first, or the annual celebration of the partnership's accomplishments. It'll take place here in Castle Rock. The county has historically always been the entity that's put together the written document. This year's is a new record, it's 19 pages long. I sent you a draft, there's a lot in there, but I was reflecting why it was important just, you know, when I decided to get into this business and to serve in local government, I recall a class I took in graduate school about county government, and the professor at the time, it was a series of articles of contrasting Maricopa County and the city of Phoenix, and really, it was all about how county governments struggle. And one of the ways they struggle, sort of the main findings of the study, was it's not having good cooperation within the municipalities, it was uncanny how things got in the way. So it was, it was a privilege, one of the privileges of my lifetime to, way back 21 years ago, along with Aiden Hogan, who was the first town manager at Town of Parker, we kind of hatched this idea of the partnership and quickly found an elected official sponsor, Melanie Worley, and if you all remember her, this was her on it. And to see how it's gone has been great, and I think the partnership is very strong. I think the other thing that study talked about was internal, a lot of counties, you have separate elected officials, separate sheriffs. I did want to highlight to the board that, given our political demographics, I think it's not too hard to predict who will be the incoming, and we're right now celebrating our fifth Leadership Academy, which I think has been instrumental in growing. I had the privilege of talking to that group a couple weeks ago. The board will have a privilege to talk to them in a couple months. But three of the likely incoming folks have graduated from that, and so they already know it together, they're already working together. So I think the future for cooperation, which will be celebrated also next Wednesday at the state of the county, this week, Thursday, it's probably at all-time high, and it's hopefully going to lead to something better than that. Tim and Luanne weren't able to join us, they'll do it, but, you know, we don't spend a lot of time going after awards, but they're very proud of being named two weeks ago as the top most improved rodeo in Colorado 2022 and the best grounds, and we'll make ways, I want to make sure y'all knew that. And then finally, I feel bad for Andy because I ran into him walking in here, and I've been meaning to get him from the board because he had sent me an email a couple weeks back. One of the things Andy does is the orchard, and with a group of volunteers, they grow a lot of foods, and there's some science behind it, but the beneficiary of that is the, some food banks, or at least, you know, and so I thought he could give us a report. So thanks for being available on short notice.
Appreciate it. Is this on, Dan?
Thank you. Well, commissioners, it's an honor to speak in front of you again. And Doug, thank you for the opportunity. I do happen to enjoy impromptu speaking, so no problem. We just received a email thanking Douglas County and our volunteer team at Hidden Mesa. Douglas County, one of the aspects of the research and demonstration orchard at Hidden Mesa is that we have a production garden that grows produce for the Parker Task Force. And this year, we donated 2,722 pounds of produce into the task force that goes to Douglas County residents in need, and the task force has been a fantastic partner most of the life of the orchard. We have donated over 30,000 pounds in total to this organization, again, 2,700-plus pounds this year. We have a team of over 55 volunteers, many of them are master gardeners certified through the CSU Extension Program, so Extension is a major partner with us also. Other aspects of the orchard, in addition to the production garden, are we have done variety trials. The original concept of the orchard was to increase food production in Douglas County. The four viable agricultural crops in the county are horses, cattle, hay and forage, and nursery products. Everything else is just a blip on the economic scale, according to the agricultural reports. Well, with the population going where it is, and, you know, approaching nine billion people possibly by the year 2015, and the Food and Agriculture Organization of the UN stating that we have to increase global food production by 70% over 2005 levels, we said, hey, you know, we can do a little bit better in an urbanizing environment. So we've been experimenting, we've tried over 500 varieties of fruits and nuts out there for suitability in this climate. All those results are summarized in a couple of reports on our orchard webpage. The master gardeners, the volunteers, and I give numerous presentations every year at agricultural conferences. We've been at Rocky Mountain Land Use Institute, regional health, actually statewide health conferences, agricultural conferences, preppers, even expos and things like that, putting those results out there. We do numerous tours. Getting back to it, other aspects of the orchard are, we have a native and pollinator garden out there. They're delving a little bit into ethnobotany with Native American plants and things like that. We still, we're developing cultural methods, and so in addition to selecting the very best species and cultivars, varieties within the species that hold up in our climate, most of them still have an Achilles' heel, and so we're developing cultural methods to say, hey, to overcome this or that climate challenge, you can grow it in this way, and we're building and demonstrating those cultural techniques. But we've also been propagating native plants, and these plants have gone into our restorations wherever we have a county road or bridge project, a trail project, or we're just rebuilding broken hydrology in some of the streams or things like that. We have to incorporate a number of native plants into those projects. And so we have, you know, like in 2015, at the Iron Horse Restoration, we created about four acres of new repairing and wetland habitat. We grew 1,200 plants at the orchard that went into that project. So it's kind of a unique project, and the rock stars of this program are our volunteers. And again, we've got 55 of them roughly at this time, you know, kind of ebbs and flows. Many of them are master gardeners, and one of the unique aspects is that while they're contributing there, they're getting the hours they need for field projects, they also have hours of obligation that they have to work at the public service desk. And so everything that they're learning with all these unique varieties, techniques, propagation, natives, production garden, vegetables, things like that, they're gaining expertise and technical knowledge, and then they can take back to that desk and answer public calls and walk-ins with better information. So we're training up a workforce here out of a partnership with CSU Extension, so I'm very pleased to give you that update, and again, thank you for your time.
Andy, thank you for that. Concludes my report. Thank you.
Great. Well, you know, I think in my very limited time here, only four years, I am constantly amazed by the institutional knowledge of Doug de Board, the intricacy, I think, the rich nature of his understanding that he brings to everything that he does. So I hope he'll forgive us for wanting to hear more from him, but I think we really have benefited over many years from his leadership and commitment to this county. So any questions for our county manager?
No questions, just given the reminder to everybody on, and I'll speak about it a little more about Veterans Day later this week, you know, Andy's also one of our veterans on staff, a veteran of the United States Army Officer Corps.
Great. So we are basically in commissioner comments now. Commissioner Teal, do you have any additional commissioner comments?
I did. You know, later this week, we'll be celebrating one more Veterans Day here in our country. And always, you know, always wish to take a moment of time and, you know, remind everyone, listen, Memorial Day is the day to remember and to honor those that never did come back from America's wars, be they the wars that we've had on our own soil, or the wars that we've had to fight going out into the wider world. But Veterans Day is the day to celebrate those of us that did make it back, and did make it back, and hopefully, like you're like myself, made it back in one piece. But of course, we all know, not everybody does. So I would ask everybody, if you have an opportunity to attend a veterans' remembrance ceremony on Veterans Day this week, please do, do yourself a favor. Go to that, take the time. Yes, a patriotic event, but really is, it is an opportunity to remember and honor your neighbor who, your neighbors among us, whom did go out with some expectation of perhaps having to make the full sacrifice for this country. And then invariably, every one of us have a veteran in our lives, be it a friend or a family member, take the time on Veterans Day. Call that individual. Call him, call her. If you are a veteran, call one of your army buddies, call one of your buddies from the Navy, Air Force, Marines, Coast Guard, Space Force, if anybody is a veteran from the Space Force yet. And call that person that you haven't talked to in a while. Go ahead and tell old war stories, don't have too many beers while you do it, but make that connection, and you may be helping that veteran, but also you'll probably find you're helping yourself.
Thank you, Commissioner Teal. Commissioner Thomas?
Thank you for those comments about Veterans Day. The county sponsored a veterans' celebration on Saturday, and the essence of my comments were that there were many who fought for our freedom and our liberty. But for those of us who are here today, I know many of you, and I know when I'm at the airport or a grocery store and I see someone wearing their hat, I thank them for their service. And my husband is a veteran, he went to Annapolis, and he often says, you know, I appreciate people saying that, but I wish that people would pay attention to candidates and vote for those that support their freedom. And so I think it's appropriate today, since it is an election day, to remind people that if you value your freedom, if you value your liberties, then really watch what candidates say, but more importantly, what have they done? And if they have done things that do not support what you believe freedom and liberty and America are about, let them know that by the way that you vote. So thank you. Probably most of you here have already voted, but remember that the next time you have that ballot in your hand. Thank you.
Well, we're on an important theme here, and I'll just briefly acknowledge Commissioner Teal's service. You probably, you often say thanks out into the community, but maybe do not receive the thanks from the county, and would like to publicly thank you for your service, and appreciate that because of your leadership, we got to have a very nice flyover right here in Douglas County on Saturday for the memorial, for the Veterans Day event. You know, my great uncle served in Vietnam at a time when it wasn't popular to serve in the military, and he received a Purple Heart. When a vehicle exploded, he had to save people in a ravine, he took a lot of shrapnel and ended up pretty badly burned. But he shared with me, he was with us on Saturday, and he said that was the first time since Vietnam he had participated in a service like that. And so he was very thankful to the county and thankful to this community for honoring him. So appreciate all of you. The next business meeting will be held on Tuesday, November 15th, 2022, at 1:30 p.m. We'll reconvene at 2:30 for our land use meeting and public hearing. Thank you very much.